Bill, I think you're on.
Folks, if we could come together, we're ready to get started again. Welcome back to Athens City Council. Tonight again is Tuesday, September 6, 2005. We finished our planning and development committee and now it is 7:30 PM. So, we do have a quorum with six of seven members present. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to amend the agenda.
Second.
I'd like to amend the agenda to add ordinance 08705, an ordinance to rezone the Green Hill subdivision to an R1 zone.
Do we have a second? We do.
Yeah.
Any objection? The agenda is amended. Next item is disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular session July 5, 2005, special session held on July 11, 2005, and the regular session held July 18?
I move acceptance of minutes.
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the amendments as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Communications, member Patterson.
Mr. President, I move to accept the July auditor's report.
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the report from the auditor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The auditor's report has been accepted. I, under communications, I am also in receipt of a, from the Liquor Control Commission, a transfer of a D5, D6 license from Court Street Management LLC, doing business as The Blue Gator, to Brad A. Wharton LLC, located at 7 West Carpenter Street. After discussions with council members, we're in the future going to announce these. And if anyone is interested in an objection or raising an issue with it, we encourage you to contact your council member. Any other comments with that? Are there any other communications anyone would wish to share? Okay. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Well, let's start with the auditor. Who has no report? Okay. How about Mayor Abel? Oh, well, the law director has no report also. Well, I don't want to let the opportunity go by. Just wanted to bring some update and some items that we will discuss more in depth at Finance Committee, hopefully in committee next week. In the street rehab fund, as you know, we emergency appropriated some money for coventry. That work has been done. It did come in under budget to a large extent because we use city personnel for a lot of it and we use city trucks that were smaller, two-ton types versus the five-plus-ton that were, in essence, tearing up the road even more and making the project more difficult. But that was able to save some degree of money, but I have gone through and looked at the street rehab fund and the commitments that we have and those grants that are potentially coming up. I'd like to review that at Finance Committee with folks. I also sent a second quarter budget versus actual comparison for both revenue and expenditures. I didn't do a whole lot of comment to you on the expenditures. I think you can readily see it's by transaction class that overall we're 2% or 3% below budget at the six-month point, but there are areas that are above 50%. Some of those we need to look at a little bit more in the Finance Committee. Others are not of great concern, but that was all sent to you over the break and we can get into that in depth at a Finance Committee meeting. Two other items I wanted just, was a reminder more for everyone else is that this Saturday is the welcoming picnics at Wards West on Congress Street and on the Mill Street, Playground Drive area. Those are at 11 o'clock, 2 o'clock on Congress Street, 11 at Wards West, and I think it's 5 o'clock at the Playground Drive location, which council hosts, as I recall. The only other item I had was that as we had talked about some time ago, fire department-wise and disaster planning areas, we are in Region 7 from a fire department standpoint, which stretches as far down as to Portsmouth up to Chillicothe and over to Marietta, Logan area. And as I reported before, one of the pieces of equipment that they wanted each region to have and we were able to get was a heavy rescue vehicle more for building collapse, mine problems, you know, collapse. That vehicle got here Thursday. It's now up at the Athens Fire Department. It's not got all of the equipment into it yet and won't have for some time because we'll be dependent on future grants to the region for that. But if you see another one that looks an awful lot like our fire trucks, it is the heavy rescue one. Some of you may wish to take a look at it. And I was up there last Thursday and it's got a lot of room in it that stores the heavy rescue equipment. And what our commitment is, is that we will, as along with a lot of other firefighters in that region, will become trained more and more on the use of that. And our commitment to the rest of the region is that if you have something where that is needed, we will get that to them. And we will supply a couple under mutual aid of our own firefighters to assist in doing that. But if you can carry six people in it, so it is a new piece of equipment and a new capability for the city, but it is a regional capability that some of you may wish to take a look at. Yes?
What's the region approximately?
Roughly, it's Portsmouth to Chillicothe, across through Hocking County down to Washington County, then all through the river between Washington, Marietta, and Portsmouth. It's a pretty good-sized region.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, Paul.
So it's going to reside in this area, it sounds like, here in Athens?
Here in the Athens Fire Department, yes.
And to be on call from all this region, so we just drive it out there when we need it, they need it?
Well, it'll be used for training purposes, hopefully more than it will for body residue. That's everybody's hope. But it does give us a capability that was the closest, you know, to us really was Columbus. Because it's just not, that was one of the deficiencies when emergency management studied preparedness for homeland security was that there were not adequate areas of, you know, heavy-duty rescue equipment where you use inflation devices to lift timbers and steel I-beams. It just wasn't, it was in a couple of the major cities and that was about it. And they wanted to be able to have that capability, much like what the sheriff is participating in from a communications at a disaster standpoint. He has a 50-mile radius or so that he, with that new vehicle theirs, is able to do. And it's the same concept, only it's a bigger region and it is for the specifically heavy rescue.
In terms of coventry, how far under, what percentage in the budget was it?
Don't have the finals yet, but I think that it probably came in $40,000 to $50,000 of below the $190,000 that you additionally appropriated. But we probably spent that much in labor costs, but it was a diversion really from other work, mostly painting and striping. Fortunately, it has been very dry, so we didn't have to use the manpower on weed control and all those things. So we did have some labor savings in that area, so. But there was some overtime involved and it actually was good for the service department to be able to do that because they, we more and more call them to do grind and patch-type jobs. This is a big one, but it helps the level of expertise.
I see Melissa sent us a letter about complimenting the street department for their graciousness, I guess, in their construction.
Some of the residents have sent letters to us complimenting our service employees that they felt dealt with them in a very fair and polite manner. They were just appreciative of getting the project done and appreciative of the way they were treated by city employees. So I'm always glad to pass those along. Any other questions?
Two quick comments. I think the coventry Penny Lane area looks great. It's nice to see that done. And I don't ever remember receiving a letter complimenting us on the garbage pickup after move-out time, and we got one of those. That, kudos there on that one. Any other comments?
Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 7505, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Joseph Lamoli, owner 270 East State Street, to construct a deck that will encroach on the city right-of-way. Mayor, uh, Mayor, Member Tamkey is not here tonight. Is there anyone that would move to adopt?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 07505.
Second.
This is a proposal to build a deck on the, building the pizza business where the village bakery was on the corner of East State and Alexander. Mr. Lamoli provided us with some drawings of the proposed deck and I think we had a discussion of that and we're ready to go.
Is there further discussion? Member Bang.
I was, I recall that we were, I was concerned about the impact of the two buildings being together in the parking and the moving, and the pulling onto East State Street. And I must admit that over the six weeks, I've lost my understanding of who was going to look into that, but certainly increasing the number of potential users will exacerbate an already serious parking problem. I just don't know how it was, I think we were told we would get on with it and it didn't, it didn't happen.
I don't have my plans right handy, but the proposed deck wouldn't really impact on the parking. It may lead to increased business, that might be true, but it would allow a handicap parking space behind the building and then a ramp which would come across the deck into the front door. But other than that handicap space, I don't, it wouldn't, because it's, that's grass area along Alexander there.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I believe there are tables out there now on the grass, so it wouldn't really increase the seating capacity, it would just make the business more accessible.
The problem wasn't that. The problem was that doing anything until we had a better set of plans for parking seemed to be a, I mean, I don't, I'm not willing, I probably wouldn't vote to hold this up, but it seemed like the plan said the parking was going to be one-way and here it was pulling onto State Street.
Well, yeah. The original plan we had when-
The one we saw.
When the bakery moved up, showed parking one-way and it developed entirely differently. And I did several months ago ask the code office to go down and review that and I know that they did, but I haven't seen anything come out of that.
Perhaps we can take it up at the next PND meeting.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Member Wild.
So this is a revocable, revocable use of the right-of-way, which will have to renew in 10 years, the way I understand it. Yes, okay. So this will come up again.
And is revocable?
Yes.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 7505?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances for second reading, 07805, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a consent agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation of two bridges over East State Street and declaring an emergency. Member Wild.
I move suspension of rules for 07905.
Second.
Okay, this is essentially to build the, repave the, rehabilitate the two bridges on East State Street. I received notice from the mayor's office and Mr. Hasslett about they wanting to put this out on bid in October, late October, to start in 2006. So I'd like to get this up and rolling. It is basically just for us to be the local authority on this and therefore really doesn't cost us anything unless we want to do more bells and whistles.
Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 7805?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
I move adoption of 7805.
Second.
Okay, this is, as said, is a contract agreement. See if I have the original ordinance here, which I do someplace, concerning the rebuilding of the, with a local public agency for this construction with ODOT concerning the bridges. This is by the East State Street and using out, since it's in the city, we have to be monitoring it. We have a contract that was put together and we'll have to put out the bid. And as I say, there's no, it's a pass-through of money. Any other questions? I can't think of anything. Yeah?
When this was first discussed in committee, I guess, you did point out that there were some bells and whistles that could be added and just one of the things that was discussed was the drainage from those bridges. That's not going to be included in this, the improvement in the drainage from there?
You've asked.
But not what we have tonight. Okay. Thank you.
I haven't seen anything.
Further discussion on ordinance 7805? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 7905, an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street from Court Street to College Street on Thursday, October 6, 2005, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM for an alternative fuel car show during Ohio University's Energy Awareness Week. Member Wild.
I move suspension of the rules on 7905.
Second.
The reason for suspension of the rules, if you look at the date, it's October 6th and if it has to go into effect in 30 days, we are just in the line.
Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 7905?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Okay. I mean, adoption of 7905.
Second.
Okay, this is, again, is closing the street on Union between Court and College. This has occurred various years and it is an alternative fuel car show. Every year, the university puts their engineers together and other entities outside the university with the idea of showing whether it's biodiesel or electric cars. I think they usually have their Formula One electric there. I've seen a couple of various biodiesel entities. Maybe even the city can get involved this time around, who knows?
Do we have anything? Put out there?
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Yeah, we just, I guess, converted one just recently. Not the new dump truck. So this is, I guess it's more relevant than ever these days, but as I say, this is a yearly event and the timeline as you, if there's suspension.
Further discussion on adoption of 07905? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 8105, an ordinance vacating approximately eight tenths of an acre of East Union Street from University Terrace to Stewart Street to Ohio University.
Mr. President?
Member Sands.
During the first reading of this ordinance, there were some questions and comments about how much planning had gone into this recommendation to vacate this area. And council members received a package put together by Ray Hazlitt and we can make copies available to anybody who needs one. There's a narrative from Ray describing the event which occurred in July of 2002, a water break underneath Jefferson Hill which washed away a lot of brick and an awful lot of soil and sand that we still aren't sure where it came from. We haven't done the actual search for all of that. And then there are some copies of emails and memos from various department heads regarding their concerns regarding repairing the street versus not repairing it, vacating it, doing something else with it. There's one from then-head of streets Roger Bale, who's talking about a cost estimate from an engineer. The cost was $276,000 to repair it. That didn't include $50,000 to replace the water and sewer lines under the street. So this is really just for information. This is second reading where normally we don't get into much discussion. Maybe this would lead to some discussion at our next meeting.
Member Wild.
I'd like to amend 8105. I put a thing in your box.
Did everyone get a copy of that or?
Does anybody want a second?
Is that one in my stack only?
Yeah.
Good. I have to go through all this? Oh, good. Paul, would you like me to read it or would you?
Well, the only difference is the addition of the word pedestrian easement in there. In other words, section one approximately, I'll read it. How's that sound?
Thank you.
Okay. Section one of this is 8105, that approximately .0 acres of East Union Street from University Terrace to Stewart Street, as per plat map attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference, is hereby vacated by, to Ohio University in that its vacation is not detrimental to public interest. The vacation is granted with the understanding that public utility and pedestrian easements will be retained by the city within the existing street width of the existing, with, for the width of the existing street in accordance to Ohio Revised Code, section 723.041. And as I say, the only difference in bold is pedestrian. The rationale for that is that it is designed to be a pedestrian area. It's been talked of as that. And as the cliche goes, it's not that I don't trust the university, but I don't trust the university. And that's the only difference. And I actually do have a disagreement with the, not the detriment part, but I didn't change that.
We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 8105. Further discussion from council?
I was just going to say, Mr. President, that I did receive this, but I didn't, I didn't have a cover, so I didn't realize what it was for, so I think that's a wise amendment to offer. Thank you.
So does maintain that they couldn't touch the sidewalks on the side, so that's what?
It means they can't drop a building in it.
Okay.
They, they could put sidewalks somewhere else.
Paul, when I found this in my box and also did not realize what it was and started with the first whereas, and I guess that that is probably already in the other one, but was not aware of it, I misread that and was thinking that that was saying that the city of Athens is not committed to repair, replace water sewer lines in this. And then I was thinking, and I guess I should be addressing this to Jim, if the university paves over, as I would assume they're going to, some type of a concrete structure and we have a rupture of a utility pipe underneath, either the sewer pipe or the water pipe, and we have to go down and repair, will we be totally committed to replacing whatever they had above?
At that point, yes. This is just saying that during the process of the university developing these pedestrian walkways and landscaping, we are not necessarily committed to replacing those pipes at that time.
Right.
But if we don't, and then we have to go back and do it, it'd just be like any other time if we're digging up somebody's yard.
We're responsible for the cost of restoring.
Yeah. We're just saying that we may not be in a position to meet their calendar, to spend the, what's now up to $60-some thousand dollars to replace those.
But it doesn't preclude that possibility?
Yeah, absolutely. We're just not committed.
Right.
Further discussion? Audience members? Joanne Prisley.
I'm Joanne Prisley and I live at Porty Grosvenor Street in Athens. I'm here as a-
Jo, I am out of order and I was just reminded by my clerk that I am out of order. We are discussing the amendment only at this point.
The amendment only, okay.
So if I could ask you to have a seat and we see what we do with the amendment, as soon as we see what we do with the amendment, I guarantee you, you will be invited back. That was my mistake and I apologize. Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend 08105 as read and as spoken to. Is there further discussion at all? All those in favor of amending 08105 as submitted?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I have a show of hands? Okay, that's unanimous. Those opposed? I don't think there will be any. The ordinance has been amended. Jo, please. My apologies.
I'm Joanne Prisley of Porty Grosvenor Street. I'm here as a representative of Zeta, Alpha, Gamma, and Delta House Company. I'm the treasurer and I've been the treasurer since 1978. I've been a member since 1949, but I've been active since I came back here in 1963. We were very concerned to discover that we were not notified about the peripheral thing on the closing of Jeff Hill is that there is a roadway in the back of our property and we are at 14 University Terrace. And it will keep, we wish to develop property in the back of that for parking. We've been told that there's no street there, that it can't be done, but we, there is a street there and I can go through this long thing that I have of the proof that there's a street there since 1844. It's been platted. But we weren't even notified and I was told that we weren't notified because we had vacated that property. We have no record of having ever vacated the property. So my concern was that you've gone ahead and discussed all this and this, if this road is closed, that means we would have no way to get into the back of the property to develop six parking spots. Now, I have discussed this with universities several times, beginning with Laverne Lauchy, and we never did get property developed till just recently and I've talked with John Kautowski and we think that, well, he says we can work out something, but for us to have some access. So I did not come here to support or not support the closing of the hill. I came here because I want some, I would like to have things held up so that we can get it settled all legally and that we have access to our, to the roadway there. And this is the problem because we weren't notified. So here, you've already had your, on your second reading and we just found out about it because we weren't notified. And so that's what, I just want the people to hold off here so that we can get this settled. And I'm sure John and I have discussed it, but I think, you know, John is not the attorney for the, for the university and I'm not the attorney for the sorority, so that we would have to work out some arrangement for us to get back in there. So I would hate to have this, and it takes time to get these things done, to have you go ahead and either amend the order and have a final reading or to continue on with it before we can investigate. Now, if in fact it shows up that we did vacate that property, but I'll tell you, I don't believe that Hazel would ever have done that. She hated the university. She never would. Quite frankly, she would not have done it. And she was the, Hazel Roach was a guru for the property. And so I have not been able to find it. I have gone through all of my records. I have gone to the courthouse. I have not gone through the city records yet, but I'm just asking that, that you hold up slightly on this to give us a chance to do this because we should have been notified according to our-
Member Wild.
Okay, this was just amended, so it's gone back to first reading.
Okay.
So next two weeks from now will be the second reading.
Second reading, so we'll have time, okay.
Hopefully you'll have time to not come before us and maybe you'll get tabled.
At that point, we may consider some slowdown.
And Jo, you have with you what looks like quite a bit of information that I hope that at least the president of, the chair of the planning and development committee could review some before too long.
I can do it. Now, this, this I can remove from the historical society without, I gave myself permission to do it. But I can share, I can share some of this with him and some of the research I did and the dates and what happened at what time and all that sort of thing.
Joanne, if you look at this, you can see that we would be vacating it by the looks of it.
I have, I have.
You saw that?
I have it.
Yeah, so it goes up touching the edge of your property.
But it goes up, we were not notified because it only- We were not notified because it only goes up to the Delta, Delta House, and we were told that we didn't have to be notified because we had already vacated, and I maintain we didn't. So, that we should have been notified for our inputs. And.
I thought you were.
I have maps and photographs and aerial photographs that show that there is in fact a street there. That was another thing that was disputed, that there was a street there. And, but there is. Go back to 1844, and I have it up through 1968 showing on there.
Okay. Put you through this.
Yeah, I have that.
Thank you very much. Are there other audience members that would like to speak? John?
John Kautowski, Ohio University. The only thing I'll add is that we, I, we've hired, Ohio University's hired Sherry Gall to do a more thorough legal search. The premise was that the tax maps were correct, which suggests that the property was vacated. We'll, we'll, we'll do some investigation with, with legal counsel, and I'll provide that information to you. I, I believe if it was vacated, it was vacated in the, in the, around 1912 to 1913. So, it's a long time ago that it would have been vacated. And that's, that's my assessment of the situation as, as I've reviewed the thing. But again, we'll, we'll get back and, and take a look at that whole thing. I know Joanne has pictures that suggest there is a road there, and there may have been a road there. And so, so in fact, she may be correct. It hasn't been. We'll just have to, have to sort through the whole thing. I have also indicated to her that we will provide access, the ability to access the back of her property. It doesn't really make a lot of sense to build a road on that alleyway with a road approximately 10 feet away from it on, on our own property, a little, a little lower on the hill. And in fact, we'll, we'll make access off of that road. As long as the East Green is there, that access road is necessary to service buildings for fire protection purposes, emergency purposes, as well as servicing the cafeterias and, and the buildings. So, so it's, you know, it's a fairly fixed commodity unless that whole area is redeveloped. And like I said, we'll, we'll provide access to the back of that property. It would still be a substantial undertaking to get, get to the back of that property from either location, but, but, but that doesn't, it's not impossible, and certainly we'll, we'll make that available.
Mr. President.
Yes, Member Sands.
I guess I'd just like to say that, as Paul pointed out, we'll read this for the second time in two weeks. If we aren't, if this isn't straightened up by then, I would assume we'd probably have to table the issue to what it was. So, we'll just, we'll wait for that point.
And if it was vacated in 1912, I believe Member Bain was a member of council.
I should remember.
Do you remember, Nancy?
I'll get you for that.
I know. Okay. I believe we're down to ordinances for first reading. Oh eighty-three oh five, an ordinance amending the two thousand and five appropriation ordinance and the two thousand and five interfund transfer. Number Phillips.
Mr. President, first of all, everyone got handed a new copy of this. There's just a slight change to it, and I'll mention it as I, I talk through this. There are several things happening in this ordinance. The first one, we're appropriating $25,000 to the general fund. That is for the software and equipment lease for parking enforcement. We discussed that earlier, authorizing that, that contract. The $22,000, that's where the change was made. We are appropriating that to the general fund into a line for repairs rather than capital improvements. That is repairs to the, the fire truck, the tower truck. It was going in to have some gaskets replaced, and it blew a head gasket and had to be towed to Columbus to get fixed. And it was really a lot more expensive to fix that on a fire truck than it would be on somebody's car.
It's expensive enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. Head gaskets, lots of them.
The $55,281 to FEMA grant is money that we receive for West State, Sunset, and Union Street. So, that's money that we received and that we're later gonna transfer later on in this ordinance. And the other three, the $34,633 to Community Corrections Act grant, $2,092 to Community Corrections Act grant, those are grants that we received, and we're appropriating that money. In section two, we're doing an interfund transfer to take that FEMA money and transfer it to departments who've already done some of the repairs or are going to do some of the repairs. The, the money that we're transferring to the recreation fund is for the fences that were repaired after the flooding, those fences on West State Street that were knocked down by the floods. The money to the garbage fund was for dumpsters and hauling for the properties that were damaged during the flooding. And the street rehab fund, that $39,689.62 is what FEMA is willing to pay to help with the sunset slip. So, it's not gonna cover all the costs of that.
No.
By a long shot.
By a long shot.
In section three, we're then appropriating the $14,800 to the recreation fund. So, we first had to transfer it from the FEMA fund to the rec fund, and then we're appropriating it because they've already spent the money to fix the fences. If anybody has questions beyond that, you'll have to ask the mayor. Yes?
What's the difference between the one in our agenda and the one you just passed over?
The one in the agenda has the money for fixing the fire truck.
Oh, okay.
Going into capital improvements, and we changed it. The fund it's supposed to be going into was a general fund for repairs.
Okay, I see.
That's all we get from FEMA mayor? I know, they, they started off real big, and boy, it seems like every time we talked on them, the amount went down, didn't it? Would like you to consider this under suspension for a couple reasons, which I can get into if somebody will make that. Well, yeah, go ahead.
I move suspend the rules on eighty-three oh five.
Second.
Motion and second.
And the reason being that the, some of these items are for the general health and safety of the citizens, and we've already spent the money.
I did do that. And two things on the Community Corrections Act grant began August first, and it has a payroll attached to it. So, and the, the repair to the fire truck has been done so that we can get it back in service. We didn't want to be without a tower truck anymore. Maintain that a street slipping over the hill might have something to do with the health and welfare. Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on oh eighty-three oh five?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of oh eighty-three oh five.
Second.
And all the things I said before that are going on in there are, are still happening in there.
Haven't changed in the last fifteen seconds. My goodness. Mayor, you kind of alluded that we may be able to get more money from FEMA. Do we know, or is that just? Well, I've got another question. I don't think we're getting more suspension. Okay. And we are looking at probably even up to a quarter of a million altogether over there. So, just to let everybody. Yeah. Okay. Further discussion? We have to adopt him? All those in favor of adoption of oh eighty-three oh five?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Oh eighty-four oh five, an ordinance amending ordinance oh three oh five, authorizing structural repairs at the Columbus Road Fire Department. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this just amends the appropriate, the ordinance for repairing the Columbus Road Fire Department. Both the engineering and the actual cost of the repairs have come in higher than, than what we originally thought. It's gonna be significantly more expensive to repair that fire station than we had originally thought. It's gonna be a total of $135,000. That does have a small amount built in as a contingency.
Comments? Oh eighty-five oh five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a revised contract with the Athens County, City County Health District. Member Bain.
Mr. President, a few months ago, Paul Weil and I visited with the health commission, I mean, the head of the health department, and he told us at that time, and actually we had a meeting on it subsequently, about a slight modification to the Athens City Health District contract. At that time, he walked through an elaborate history, which, and I wasn't even there then, which said that in, well, in 1958, we did have a city health board, and it combined at that point in time. The main reason for this contract is to allow a different and expanded representation. And it, I, it was verified, read through by Chuck Hammer, negotiated with the mayor, and I think, and I know Gary has approved it, so that's what this ordinance is about.
Okay. Other comments? Oh eighty-six oh five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subordination agreement for the city's mortgage with Sean Arno for a real estate located at forty-nine Palmroy Road. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is a, a resident of the city who took advantage of our down payment mortgage assistance fund to buy a house, and, and that was in 2004, I believe. And he'd like to refinance that loan. If he refinances it, and our assistance fund basically puts us in a second mortgage position on a loan. If he refinances the loan and pays that off, then we move up to number one position, and the bank who wants, is gonna loan him money doesn't like that. So, they need a letter, this agreement of subordination to put us back into second place. And we've done this several times with these loans, and we just need to do that again.
Comments?
This loan fund is a five-year, a six-year forgiveness plan from the city, so if, if the residents stay in this home for six years, the, the money that they borrowed from us is slowly forgiven at that point.
Also, remember that we probably will suspend on the second reading on this.
Probably will, because they need to get this done in September. They really want us to come back for a special session in August, but we prevailed upon them to wait for a long time. At second reading, I'll ask for suspension on this.
Further comments? Resolutions for first reading are oh eight oh five, a resolution accepting the amounts, I'm sorry, am I missing?
We added oh eighty-seven.
We sure did. We amended our agenda, and I forgot to make my usual mark there. Still under items for first reading, oh eighty-seven oh five, an ordinance to rezone the Green Hill subdivision to an R-one zone. Boy, you folks would have been mad at me if I'd missed that one. Member Sands.
Mr. President, your, the title of this really tells it all. This is the result of a committee meeting we had at seven o'clock this evening. This rezones the Green Hill subdivision from an R-three, as it is now zoned to an R-one zone.
I think we could say it several different ways, but I don't know what else to say. Other comments?
Do we need to? No, it's three readings.
We're going through three, so it's just introducing.
We have a resolution.
That's the resolution. We'll be there in a moment. I tried to get there earlier. They wouldn't let me. Other comments on ordinance eighty-seven oh five? Now to resolutions for first reading, resolution oh eight oh five, and yes, folks, this is a threereading resolution. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this is a resolution that council regularly passes that just certifies the fact that we need our share of the inside mileage. This is part of the property taxes that get shared between, you know, the school district, the city, the county, the townships, and, and this certifies our share of that. It goes to the budget commission.
Other comments? Okay, we'll see that in a few weeks. Announcements and other business. Committee meetings for next time, folks. Patterson?
I will need the Nards and Recreation Committee meeting next time, next week, for discussion of the fountain and the nature works grant. And Dale will need a finance meeting for several reasons, among them, tax changes.
Member Bain.
I think Jim is going to, we, I met with some citizens who wanted to talk, come and present something, and Jim already has some other stuff going on.
Right. So, we'd like to schedule a planning and development committee meeting. One, to list some citizens who want to come to talk to us about redefining open space, green space in our community. Secondly, representatives from national church residences who are proposing the development of a retirement center on Stimson Avenue would like to come back and talk to us about what they've been up to. I don't propose this, I don't see this as a long discussion, but, but they have run some flood plane, some flood modeling, and some other information. And I'll see if I can find some more information about the parking in the Village Bakery pizza area.
I'll have a regular meeting the next time, but I was wondering if we could put two things on your agenda. One would be the water expansion, which follows the rules, but we should hear it in committee on Peach Ridge, and I'll have it ready for next time.
Okay.
And this, and it's tangentially that. It's got everything ready to go. And the other thing is, this is near and dear to your heart, Jim. Composting was left out of the solid waste plan, so we need to discuss approving it again, and so I'll let you do it, since you've been composting with the best of them over the last year. And then I will have a meeting the next week, because it seems like the schedule will be very full. So, Debbie's gonna add to it.
Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I think the mayor mentioned a couple other items for finance in his report to discuss our street rehab commitments and reviewing that budget report in more detail.
Number Weil.
Actually, part of the agenda for finance personnel would be trying to come to some money for the Ohio Avenue sidewalk. We need to put that through again. And I'd like to see, I think that should go through finance, so I wouldn't have a transportation since that will cover the, the.
Sure. Other items? If anything else comes up, get with clerk on that. Any other announcements or other business? An opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on tonight's agenda. Is it there? Council rules provide, please come forward, that you state your name and your address.
My name is Alice Kennedy, and I live permanently in Coolville, Ohio, four-three-seven-six, Frost Road. I am the owner of Tabs Taxi and Airport Service here in Athens, Ohio, and I've had it since about ninety-nine. And over the course of the years, I've been trying to get some direction on some, a couple of issues that I think need to be addressed. In the year 2001, I talked with, no, year 2000, I believe, with the police chief, safety director, and Steve Pearson, and Teresa, and we had a meeting, of which my concern at that time was the BCI reports, criminal background checks that are required of us, and when I say us, I mean the taxi cab drivers. And nothing got resolved with that. Steve and Teresa had done a report, of which I have a copy, but no action was taken with it. So, after that, I pursued, I believe it was in 2002, I asked a Ms. Walker via email to give me, Deborah Walker, to give me some direction. And I got a return in January of 2002. So after that, I pursued, I believe it was in 2002, I asked a Ms. Walker via email to give me, Deborah Walker, to give me some direction. And I got a return in January of 2002 that it was being checked, but she would get back with me after a few more questions were answered. Then recently, I had contacted Ms. Patterson on the city council to see what was going on, as that person's name was given to me to be responsible for transportation in the city. And her response was that she didn't even know that the taxi cabs were under the direction of city guidelines. Well, the issues that I have that have gone on and on with this, from my research now, and I'm not, I, I can't speak for anything that was before me, but from my research, I'm finding that the taxi cab business, the drivers, are required to do a criminal background check, and if certain things show up in that, such as felon, or felony, they are not allowed to drive if that felony has been a conviction within the last five years. And from what I understand, that is a directive or administrative procedure that came out of the mayor's office in the early 90s regarding, I believe, grant monies from the federal government, I would assume, or some government subsidies, like state or federal. And those guidelines were set up for that. At that time, I was familiar with that because it was my relatives who had the cab company before me, Gilbert and Shirley Tabler. So I'm somewhat familiar with that. My, my concern now is that it seems with that, not getting that resolved, there are other issues that are coming up, and I'm beginning to feel like I'm being penalized. I researched it, and I looked and see that the city has no requirements of their own employees as far as plumbers, electricians, et cetera, that go into people's homes. Taxi cab drivers do not go into people's homes. So given that there is no longer a token system in Athens, or anything being subsidized to us as a cab company through the government, that issue there is penalizing us. The other thing that I've noticed, or really through research, not only are, the city's not asking their own employees to go through this, but they're asking us, and I think that's unfair, when I think the issue should be safety. Now, I've heard this old argument about, well, what if you get a rapist, or blah, blah, blah. Given the procedure as it is now, we have 30 days for a temp, no, 60 days for a temporary permit, and then you could be reissued another one, provided you show proof of a BCI. And then when I go through these, these administrative procedures and the ordinances, I see some things that are being addressed and some that aren't, like there's a safety course that's, I think by the police department's supposed to be issued or taken. That's not done. The other thing that I've seen is now we have another cab company, and, and that's good. But they had an unlicensed, uninsured driver that hit someone. That person got cited, and went, after going to the hospital, got cited for jaywalking, and nothing ever happened to that cab company. There was no reprimand or anything.
Okay. Ma'am, this is getting very involved.
Okay.
And we take seriously what you have to say, but I think since it is so involved, maybe it would be a lot more appropriate to be addressed in a committee meeting, either Transportation, Paul or Carol, I don't know if we've really handled cabs under, I know you've handled buses, so.
No, it's part of.
Okay. It may not happen next week, but possibly in three weeks. Carol, could you add this lady to your agenda and make sure that she is notified and given an opportunity to, at length? See, we usually, under this, only provide for three minutes.
That's fine.
But we will give you an opportunity to bring forth what you would like to say, and it'll give us a little bit more time to be more prepared and able to address your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That would be September 26th.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak before council tonight? The next item on our agenda is an executive session that has been requested by one of the council members to discuss some of the pending litigation that is before council. So after that item, we will only adjourn. So we will take about five minutes for anyone that would like to address any question to council, one-on-one, and to give government channel time to break down the cameras and that thing. Motion to go into council executive session.
I move the council.
We always start at this end. I always depend on Dale to do it.
I move council to go into executive session to include council members, the auditor, and the mayor.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will see you after executive session. Bernie, turn it on.